I don't think we need to go to. We can. I'll hand it over to Jason, you can, you've got a presentation to set up for.
Yeah, I just thought I'd take a little presentation real quick and then we can go for a minute. So this, this is the same thing you got here in front of you.
On the screen?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I got you.
Alright, so this, this floss would run, it would pick up in twenty twenty seven, which is when the current ends. And would go through twenty thirty three. The current spot was approved by voters back in March of twenty twenty, took effect in twenty twenty one. And it expires June thirtieth of twenty twenty seven. The current split is eighty two county eighteen C. Alright, so the next few slides is just kind of the steps that state law outlines. So at least thirty days before the election superintendees should recall, you have to have a meeting with municipalities or municipality in our case. And then the notice has to be sent ten days prior, so that kind of brings us up to where we are now. And then I think everybody's been through this before, negotiate the intergovernmental agreement. There is a way to proceed without one if negotiations are unsuccessful or they fail. At the conclusion of the negotiations, the board of commissioners and the city council will adopt a resolution and put an intergovernmental agreement lays out the, the list of projects, the estimated cost of each, and then the time period of the living. So, once we've done that, the election superintendees, the call for referendum. This year, we have to do that ninety days before the election in November, there's a, some statewide races. Maybe just one, public service commission, I think it's on the ballot, so that triggers the ninety day thing. So that's why we're having to do this, sort of on a compressed timeline and, and get it done by the end of July to meet that ninety day deadline. So the election superintendent would send the notice, that runs for four weeks before the election. One thing I wanted to mention to everybody tonight, if, if you want to include general obligation debt, then that information has to be included in the notice and let's put that in the intergovernmental, intergovernmental agreement. So if you want, if there are projects you want to do bonds for, then we need, that has to be known kind of upfront so that that can go into the ballot language and into the intergovernmental agreement. And then we did that the last time to, just to get our, our hands on the money earlier so we could go ahead and get projects started. So we didn't bond the whole amount, but we did, we did bond a portion of it. Prepare the ballot language, that'll, that'll come directly from the intergovernmental agreements, the resolutions that passed. And that will include the estimate of the revenue we expect to generate, the general list of all the projects and the time period of the tanks. So when it's approved, and this wouldn't, so if, if it's approved this year, it, the collection still wouldn't start until twenty twenty seven. If, if say we, we don't do it this time, or it fails and you have to look at doing it down the road, the general rule is that it begins on the, the first day of the next calendar quarter, eighty days after the election, more than eighty days after the election. So that can play into timing if we, if, if the group opted not to do it this year and you wanted to wait until. So if the vote fails, you gotta wait twelve months. So when, when that would come into play is if, if say you didn't do it in November this year and said you want to wait until the spring next year, primary, primary next year, and it fails. So twenty twenty six, March, I guess it would be, say it fails and you gotta wait twelve months. You put it back on in March of the following year, then we may have a slight lapse between when the collections and the current wouldn't stop and when the new ones start. So hopefully none of that will be an issue for us, but just wanted to go over that. There are two methods that state law lays out on how to share the revenues by intergovernmental agreement or population based formula in the absence of an intergovernmental agreement. Generally, you can levy as far as broke the five years, if you have the intergovernmental agreement, you can go to the sixth year. Okay, I wanted to talk for just a minute about what we're seeing right now in terms of collections. So when we put the last one together, the amount, the average collection amount using the most aggressive number we had was like a hundred and ninety thousand a month. And so right now, we're averaging, over the last year, we're averaging three oh eight a month. So we're far beyond what we, what we figured on. Now, there's been, you know, we went to COVID since then, there was a state law change about, you know, what's, what's taxed and what's not. Online sales, I think were a big part of that, so anyway, we're generating a lot more revenue than what we anticipated when we did this, five years ago, whatever it was. So we're averaging about three oh eight. So if you take that and collections would begin July twenty twenty seven, if you apply, you know, an inflationary factor there, you could anticipate something like three twenty four a month when the collections start. And then if you apply the inflationary factor each year, the, the total amount that we would expect to play would be about twenty five and a half million dollars. And so that's, that's the amount that, you know, you would look to, to divvy up, that would be the, the total projected collections.
Was that projected of the last block?
I think fourteen million.
Fourteen million?
Yep, yeah. Yep, fourteen million.
Jason, is ours restricted by the six years or the dollar amount, or we know that if we max out, if we put a dollar amount on that?
No, you can continue collecting. You can go beyond the, yeah.
And then we've looked at, you may have said it with, with your numbers, percentage wise, what we increased, probably looks since twenty twenty two because that's when everything went crazy and then kind of leveled out the last three years as far as collection side. So I know in my day job, we were, we were getting about thirty five percent twenty three to twenty four, and forty percent twenty four to now. Like they said, we've said this all morning this morning, we're probably estimating about five percent per month.
Okay.
Increase over last year's, what we got. So those numbers look good. That was about twenty two, twenty three million with no inflation.
Yeah.
Your cat moved these blocks, we're done?
Not either or, not, not this time. That's why I'm thinking about what we're gonna show up enough.
The, the rule for us is that whatever excess you collect, as long as it, is it applied to its item that was on the original referendum, yeah, yeah. So if you had recreation on there, you can spend it on something recreation related, or vehicles, you spend it on something vehicle related, you're good.
So do we anticipate putting any D O bonds on this one?
I, I think it's a good thing to do, it's sort of depending on what, what type of projects we put on there, I mean, if, you know, you could, you could get the money, probably, I, I don't know, by this time next year at least, and then you'd be able to go ahead and get those projects started.
I think one of the things we need to look at is, is the interest rates now to bond, you know, to bond the money versus what we think the inflation rate of the materials is, because that's the only thing we've looked at before, is if we push a project two or three years down the road, and the cost of materials and labor is six, seven percent higher, and we could have borrowed your money at three percent, four percent, you know, thought it might make sense to, to do the bonds.
I think if nothing else, it makes a lot of sense just to put it in the, in the reference.
Yeah. If you don't mind.
No.
Like I said, I think percentage wise, I mean, we just discussed it not that long ago, I, I think considering how much it's gone over and I think we'll continue to do, I think that's a good thing. I would encourage this group on both sides, I would say, come up with any projects we could that would benefit the city and the county to both agree to put some aside for that, whether it be the sidewalks or paving the roads that we nabbed out from DOT. Is there a portion of that where we could do that? I think we should really, if not today, all of us, I would encourage all of us to kind of make that a homework thing is, what projects could we look at where all of us could benefit and work and use this money together at the same time? Especially when you think about paths like the Pines and Stone Gables where we've paved our part and all paid y'all's part. Is there something we could do that, especially, I know the county commissioners and the city council had a big concern with sidewalks being one of them. Is that something we could put down that, that would benefit everybody and use some of that money where we all feel like we're making?
We do have a couple spots that we've been looking at trying to create community parks, you know, in some of the areas. So I'll take this one. Our next steps. So I guess sort of the, the first thing is, do we want to continue down the road looking at the, to the government ballot? And then assuming, yes, the proceeding split is something that the group will have to, to talk about and figure out. Each entity, you know, develop their own project list and then decide if you want to do the, if you want to include the capability to bond the projects in, in the referendum.
This is your warehouse, could you do these plots? This November's a good time to put it up? We've got the city also, of course, I don't know, but just.
Y'all have that, y'all have anything on ballot in November? Don't make any elections.
It's our election year.
This November?
This November, yeah, yeah. Qualifies third week most. That'll be on there, the public service commissioner.
My thing is to educate everybody because, you know, you got this fiscal, they're gonna be hollering, they always do, but let them realize that this floss, you know, and just try and get them to realize that, I mean, everybody pays, you know, it comes, it's going off rooftops. I remember one of the first class they told us, they said, don't pin on your floss, but paying the bills on a long term. And it's, it's scary when you've got those, you know, long term debt that you're, you've dedicated. As far as county goes, I mean, I've said it our, our, our last work session, we just got so many projects that we need to finish, you know. We got parks and, parks and rec projects finished, so we got several, several projects that started in this county that that would be addressed by our floss revenues that I'd love to see finished and then working together. Just like you said with Stone Gables and, and that, you know, that's a, it was a time y'all, y'all, y'all were paying and we weren't ready, you know, and it's like, it, it don't make sense. It's just working together, working together too by doing some of these business together because maybe we can get some a little bit favorable bids from some of these companies as we've got stuff going, going in together. We work together with the board of education, that's the reason why we can't do the same thing with the city. To, to pull our resources and maybe get some better bids from some of these kind of factors. We do roads, you know, one thing I remember, there was some sidewalks that were put in nine years ago going to the school. And I think those were something that the county might correct. You know, we had applied for it, but it, it ended up being at the city, but with that stuff like that working together, I mean, we're all one community, we need to act like it.
I think the board of education helped out on that part of that sidewalk too.
Maybe so, that was right when I first started, that was.
Leslie Ford, who has come and got that grant.
Around ten dollars, something like that, almost in the city.
Do y'all, I guess the question is, do y'all have any issues with it going in November, because we don't have anything on ballot. Public service commission's the only thing that I know of.
I agree, the big thing is educating after what we saw with the reaction and the, the discussion after the fact for the T spots. How important that is as to let people know, but I, I think that this November would be fine.
Everybody's quiet, what's your thought?
November's fine.
We're all getting extra money, that's, that's nice. Like I said, a, a present, a pleasant surprise. I leave my boys out, I be perfect man against a boy like this.
Bear with me.
It will.
So the big thing we need to do is go home back to our respective place and come up with some lists?
Yeah, I think that's a good next step and we, we do have sort of the time constraints this time, we gotta get all this done by the end, end of July. And so, yeah, I, I think that's the next step.
But we, but we do have current figures based on.
Collections.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
They have a little more, on something of that viewpoint, you're everyone looking at projects and costs.
Yeah.
That'll, that'll be up there.
So can we put it on the ballot where we're, we're gonna have city, county collaboration or something like that? Could that be something that would be in?
Yeah, I'll have to think about how you, how you word that, but.
Can we do based on the project, whatever project we decide?
Yeah.
A unit, a joint project if you will.
Yeah.
You know, getting all the pounds done, getting all, don't be able to.
Well, I said, I like the idea of the sidewalks, because I know that's been a hot topic, I know John and David both have a lot of, that's been a high priority.
It's a necessity. Sidewalks kind of one twenty nine even highways are a necessity for a lot of families.
Right.
Everybody wants a splash.
It's not about recreation, it's about livelihood for a lot of those families. So I, I think that would be a good one to consider, I know me and David and, and you have all talked about it at length. I'd like to hear, I know David mentioned about some city parks, I'd like to hear more about that, maybe attend some of y'all's work sessions on that.
Yeah, I got a technical question, I guess it'd be on, on cars, alright, recreation comes under the county. So who's responsible for the parks? Because we want to put a park in my neighborhood, there at Tanger Wood and, uh, Woodland, we got the property. We got one where's in Stone Gables and one in Stone Millporters. We got, I know of three different places, we got the property, city property. But since recreation is, comes under y'all on a service delivery, we can build it, but who's gonna look at, so we can use, say we use city floss money to build it, but who's gonna look after?
I mean, I, I think.
So, do you guys have a question?
Yeah. I mean, I, I think that's something y'all could, I don't think we would ever raise a stink about, you know, y'all building the park and it says under service delivery that, you know, we're supposed to do recreation, recreation solely a county thing. I don't think we would ever have any kind of issue with, with that.
I want you to handle it, that's what I'm saying.
I see where you're talking about.
Yeah, I mean, I'm serious.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we don't want to add to the cost by having us to have, have to hire employees for parks and recreation, we already got a parks and recreation apartment on SDS, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah.
What we would have, you know, it, it wouldn't be something as, as elaborate as the, the one on eighteen and, and, and all, you know, just, just something to.
To serve.
Like that, it's just gonna be like.
Just to serve the community.
Yeah. Cause they do have some big, big town, a lot of place there.
Yeah, put in a shelter to somebody.
You know where he's talking, we own a lot.
Right there, right, right, right corner from your house.
Yeah.
It's been there for fifty, sixty years, I think.
As far as maintaining parks, I mean, city residents pay county taxes, so I mean, they're already making their contributions.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just saying, you know.
They're already making their, they pay the county taxes, they're making their contributions.
You're just saying they're gonna cut the grass.
Well, I thought, yeah, you know, you know, but if something goes wrong.
That'd be a good thing to get into your area.
If the cell for links. Cell for links is gonna fix, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
We did.
We did.
He's just saying the parks, the county counts them all. And it wouldn't be in the county.
Do we want to come up with a second meeting date today?
Yeah, that'd be good.
Fourteenth and sixth.
The fourteenth.
How does that work? That's a third, second one, though.
Is that two weeks from now?
Yeah, it's two weeks from now.
That's what I was thinking, two weeks.
Fourteenth is six?
Yeah. I mean, if that works for us, yeah, but.
Run back out, no, not till we get all this.
I think I got the Royal Series of perfect, I believe, I checked, it's been sick.
Fourteenth, uh, this month? That's a lot, well.
Next month.
July.
The next one coming up?
It's, we're almost there.
I knew what you were gonna say.
Couple more islands, right Sam?
Couple more, yeah. Now, I, I would ask that Jason and Sam share if they're gonna coordinate colors for the rest of us.
Okay, if you can't support Jones County with the purple, you know, I don't want to tell you.
Ain't that right, Mr. David?
It's a hint of purple. Me and Terry dress down, is that right?
Fourteenth, tenth, eighth. That's who do I have?
Yeah.
Monday.
Actually, neither attorney can make it that many.
John Newberry can't be at that meeting.
Well, that's fine.
We're recorded.
I don't give him hell about this, I don't want him.
Neither attorney can be there?
John.
Neither girl? Well, that works, if neither girl can be here, I mean, you got nice and simple.
You know, bro, you bring it.
That's right, Brady will bring it to that meeting while John's absent.
Oh, you'll be here, he won't.
Oh, he did, Nathan, he said you went down.
Neither?
Y'all, y'all gotta make that.
I don't, no, this is second.
That's in the middle of us.
Yeah, it's in between.
That's in between.
We'll just have three weeks in a row. That'll be alright.
Yeah, I see, I don't think, I would advise that, are y'all?
Yeah, today's, um, the other thing I would like to encourage while we're all here before we part, in case we're headed there is, we still love hanging out there as the, the logo branding, we've got to come together and discuss at some point. It's something that we've put the money into, we've put design and time into, I hate to just see it kind of float out there forever. I, I would encourage us, if we can set as a group, I don't want to do it on the same night because these are both very big issues. It might be too much to do the same night, but I really encourage us to come up with a time soon where we all get together. I would encourage, because we've kind of been unsure as getting some of the other groups involved, if not necessarily even a vote, the discussion, the main street, who else is doing that DDA, all those groups that'll be chamber, all those groups at least to get their opinion, if not from, you know, the chairperson or that board or, you know, get their way, their, their way too, because it's gonna affect them also, I, I think we should, you know, we, something that we really need to focus on getting together for also, we could schedule something for that too. But I don't think, I think it's too much to do that on the same night, but.
Soon after.
Soon after.
So we're gonna rest up?
I was gonna say, maybe we can agree on that night, y'all can put it part of the agenda to set a date for that, so that we have something holding us to doing it.
Yeah, we gotta face file behind you. Big file, we probably, we'll get that done.
Come on, please.
Because I mean.
It's a lot of time and money spent for them to, for this to be sitting there.
Right, exactly, so I would encourage us, if Jason or Shannon ever puts the committee out or the agenda for that, I would ask that y'all put to the next agenda for the next meeting that we discuss a date for the logo branding, or a meeting shortly after that. Sorry, hijack this.
We just, I got John on the first.
Yeah, 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 I'm sorry.
No, 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 it's fine, it's, you know, okay, uh, just FYI, because we've got another meeting set up with G dot. John was at the last meeting with him, I got a little familiar with the speech situation where they, Merry Christmas. But anyway, so he's done some homework that he promised John that he did, and I can give you the information, I wonder if you got down that. But he suggested or offered that, that, you know, we'd love to have y'all come, John was our last meeting. If it's okay with council, we'll have it during the committee's meeting on the twenty first, is that okay with you?
Sure.
So you put that on the calendar. So like I say, he had some good ideas to help both the city and the county with, with projects coming up through G dot. What they've done, everything we're all receptive to, all ideas, but of course, you know. He's not, he's not, nobody's giving money, sorry, but.
We're taking some other psycho.
You know, it's, it's, with that stuff in there, that, that he shows that it's available, like, you know, that's what you have, what we have to look for. What's available is the city or the county could afford in conjunction with G dot that, that we can make the improvements for our citizens, so that the county or city, because, you know, like you said, we're one big community. So that's, that's what we want to be, you know, cause calling out the old neighbors, helping neighbors, helping family, working together. And so I've got sections that are inside of a renter, and of course, we do too. But, and I've got firm that I'll give, that you know definitely on twenty first at six, which is constable, you know. Like I said, we'd love to help. You thought, you thought it was good to make one?
I do, I think it's very good.
Yeah, so. Yeah, that was it, Mr. Jackson.
Any other comments? Are we gonna talk about the elephant in the room, talk on the percentage split? Because that's gonna affect what projects up there, talking about, I mean, are we, based on our census, you know, the population hasn't changed that much, so we're gonna be in agreement to leave the percentages decided?
I like leaving the percentage where it's at, like I said, it wasn't that long ago, we've discussed it, hashed it out, I think we're in a good place. And I think it'd be worth it for a little bit of change, the wiggle either way, to leave it where it's at. And like I said, as the token between the two, rather than change it, is to come up with a project that benefits all of us together that we both agree to put some towards. I think would be the, the way to address that, would be my, my consideration.
Our census, we got more people, we just went to that one.
So did that.
Let us discuss it first before we, we say we.
That's just my, that's just my excuse, I mean, I don't want it to be to get on the fourteenth, but that's kind of where I'm at.
I like eighty two.
We also like doing the jury, before we discuss anything, everybody write down on a piece of paper.
Yeah, that's a good one.
Guilty or not guilty, listen, a little point somebody to open them up.
I heard you meant to do, you do arm wrestling this fast, so.
Well, like I said, I didn't want to get sound pressure up this, this program.
I'm over that.
You over that, man? I was all the way out there, I got on.
What's the percentage now?
Eighteen, eighty two.
Eighty two, eighteen?
This is second.
That's what it is now.
Y'all all been confused, man.
That's a eighteen.
Seventeen.
But, you like eighty two? Kind of like going forward a little bit, we can always kind of get up shortage through there. We kind of think it's a hard road to get up for a percentage here and there, or you just want to flip it this time and we get the eighty two.
I was looking at fifteen million versus twenty four million, that's possible. Everybody getting more money. This, this split's working track right now, because we're all getting a lot more than we ever thought we were gonna get.
And I'm sure this'll overperform to some degree, probably the percentage, that's what I'm saying, I mean, when you look at the numbers and when we look at this time to move it half or one percent, I don't see a major change, especially like I said, if we come up with a project that, that benefits all of us, that you probably end up working that out in the wash, or the percentage is right there.
Especially if there's parks built in the city and county.
They need to go to that.
Yeah. That's the expense that will incur.
Somewhere in that, yeah, that's it, I, I think that's a much better, where we end up in a happier spot with real.
Neighborhood parks, they walk to from their homes.
Yeah.
They enjoy to have it in the week, they enjoy that to have it, it's nice to have.
Yeah, we don't want fireworks to minimize that.
That'll teach us too.
Don't teach them to. Wendy, don't you talk to Eric for some? Wilson?
There's so many people around that have splash pads that have great stories about it, okay? Eric might be one of them, and he was, how many years ago in that business, they put three, three, two, three?
The, but yeah, I think.
They gonna allow them.
That percentage, yeah.
Yeah. I fight for.
I think you're gonna work on that percentage with something like that, you can get actual real benefit. Or half a percent, you end up not even realizing, well, if y'all would take care of a park that we did, or something like that, I think that's some real.
Stay broke more than you were now.
Well, little kids just don't listen.
That's what I'm saying.
And stuff like that, you just don't, you don't listen.
Lots of we, they behind in Baldwin County on theirs, they're about six, eight months behind us, theirs are right now.
It's still empty.
Well, that's the one thing you can all, you know.
So the biggest thing is the regulations that the health department require, it's just like the swine pool, so you gotta test it twice a day. You have to send your reports in to the health department, you have to add chemicals if it needs.
Like a pool. Yeah, basically, that's what it is, open air pool.
Either that, or do you do like.
Cities, cities, the county all around us.
One city side, just do not recirculate the water, just put fresh water and let the rest go down the sewer, and so then you got water and sewer to use.
All that, that's, that's.
If y'all would be willing to give us water, financial water, just to make sure. You know, a couple hundred thousand ounces a month, just to make, just to make sure.
Yeah. We can always, like I say, we can always start next, next month, month meeting off with a secret ballot. Ballot.
But with the secret ballot, you'll put city or county.
Kind of take it, and if the poor old man has hands.
What do you think, Jason? With the secret ballot, you'll put city or county, you just put a two percent, just.
Like I said, I'll give some chance a week to start looking at some stuff, you know.
Are we gonna decide on the slip?
Next meeting, I think, that's my suggestion, we just start the meeting off with a separate ballot. I've been talking about splash pad over there, Wednesday, so I, I try to, y'all can splash all you want to.
I don't see the two votes so far in the playoff.
Yeah, what's that windy up a little kitty for, a splash pad? Well, I can't even get my old pool in line green, so, okay? Or a splash pad.
Anything else?
Appreciate y'all hosting. Last year, y'all had, had cookies and all of that. That's been on name, isn't it?
We're getting up the percentage.
Yeah, we're getting another percentage, we'll bring some cookies.
That'll be some good.
It's warm, it's an expensive place. Are we done?
We done?
All right. Thank you.
Appreciate y'all.